We'll wait for Mr. Rankin.
Okay, we're on.
Oh, yeah. Good evening, everybody, and the Falkir County School Board meeting is called to order, and if you would, please stand and join me in the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ms. Darner, if you would, please take the roll and record. And at this time, if there is a motion?
Madam Chair, I move that the school board adopt the agenda as written.
Second.
Motion and a second. The agenda be adopted as written, any discussion. If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and the motion carries. And before I get into announcements, I believe Ms. Hoover has something for the school board. And that's all I know.
I'm just here to report that we had a very successful StarTalk program this year. And to thank you all for your support, we have official FCPS 2012 StarTalk T-shirts.
Oh, yay.
With Turkish and Arabic on the back.
Thank you.
Thank you. How many students did you have?
We had 112.
Oh, my goodness.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Another successful program.
Thank you.
I've been wearing last year's T-shirt regularly, so I'm glad.
Thank you.
If I can use this one.
While you're there, I attended this, and I forget what day it was, but it really, Falkir has a remarkable program here that people are trying to duplicate throughout the country, and I don't know if everybody really realizes that, how overwhelming support this program has. The other thing, when I was touring all the classrooms, this time, because I did last year also, this year I was really surprised how little English I heard in all the classrooms. So it was really neat, even from the younger students. And the teachers are just incredible. So, thank you for the program.
Thank you.
It was really marvelous, and thanks for the teaching.
Thank you. Okay.
Lot of hard work.
Okay, I will move to announcements. The first day of school, believe it or not, is Monday, August 20th. Parks and Rec Co-op Meeting, really, will be held Tuesday, August 21st, at 6:00 p.m. in the Alice Jane Childs Building Basement Conference Room. There will be an FHS Renovation Advisory Committee meeting Wednesday, August 22nd, at 6:00 p.m. in the School Administration Conference Room. Chairman's Night is Monday, August 27th, at 5:00 p.m. in the School Administration Conference Room. There will be a school board work session Monday, August 27th, at 6:00 p.m. in the School Administration Conference Room. Back to Chairman's Night, are we maybe not going to be there at 5:00 that evening?
We won't be.
Right.
Right.
Okay, so, yeah. Okay, no Chairman's Night, August 27th, okay. There will be a Health Advisory Committee meeting Wednesday, September 5th, at 8:00 a.m. in the Central Complex Meeting Room. The Special Ed Advisory Committee will meet Wednesday, September 5th, at 5:30 in the Central Complex Meeting Room A. The School Support Council will meet Thursday, September 6th, at 7:00 p.m. in the School Administration Conference Room. And the next school board meeting is Monday, September 10th, at 7:00 p.m. in the Warren Green Building. And Ms. Darner has asked me to announce that, beginning with that meeting, the September 10th meeting, the only thing that will be a hard copy out in the hallway there for everybody will be the agenda, since everything else is going to be up here on the screen now. The only thing that will be provided out there will be just a hard copy of the agenda, and if somebody needs something, they should contact you. Okay. We don't have a response?
None, no.
Yeah, okay, then we will move to citizens' time. The school board appreciates public input, however, due to time constraints, citizens' time is not a time for dialogue. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Matters relating to personal or personnel issues should not be discussed. The school board welcomes the public's comments and believes community involvement is an important component of a successful school division. And when you come to the podium, if you would, please state your name and your magisterial district. And Mr. Green, I believe you are the sole speaker this evening, but you still get three minutes.
Shucks. That's okay. We'll keep it very short. John Green, Lee District. I'm concerned about the Falkir High School renovation. The renovation agreement, as you remember, is between the supervisors and the school board. It limits the plan to $32.8 million. The new classroom building is not to exceed $26.6 million. Everything else not to exceed $6.2 million. The classroom building appears to be on budget. However, the Performing Arts Center, which is part of the expanded scope, is now estimated to cost some $5.4 million. That's quite an increase from what it was originally estimated to cost. But my biggest concern is this only leaves less than $800,000 to complete the rest of the renovations in Phase Two. The Board of Supervisors School Board Liaison Committee is charged with deciding what renovations will be done beyond the new classroom building. After the Performing Arts Center, as I said, there's only less than $800,000 to complete the rest of the renovation. Where's the money going to come from? The original Needs and Wants List that was submitted to the Board of Supervisors dated April 14th, 2011, estimated that outside the new classroom building, they would need $25.6 million. When you subtract the Performing Arts Center, leaves you with about $20 million. Now, we're talking about only $6.2, and you've already used up $5.4. I'm also seeing, in the latest school CIP, that some of the items that were originally in the plan for the renovation are now showing up in the CIP. Liaison Committee is now considering projects such as the science labs that would put Phase Two project over the spending limit of $6.2 million. And I have some just simple questions. What happened to the original plan to renovate Falkir High School? What is the plan now? It seems to be going outside the limits set originally. And what will be the final cost for renovating Falkir High School? It appears that it's going to be far greater than the $32.8. Thank you.
Thank you. We will move to board member reports, and, let's see, we'll start with Brian.
We're going to hear a little bit about our financial report and our financial committee. The School Health Advisory Board has not been meeting over the summer, but we do have a new chair person to chair that, and we're looking forward to ramping that back up in September. And obviously, we're looking forward to Wednesday convocation and being out there. I really hope many of the teachers will stop by to see us, employees will stop by to see us at the benefits portion, and I'm looking forward to meeting folks who do stop by.
Mr. Blain.
All right. Madam Chair, if I may, I would like to give a read from the Building Committee. Let's start with Falkir High School. The construction remains on schedule and budget. An incredible amount of work has been done, including much of the detailed work, both inside and outside, to include the electrical work and also the mechanical work. The geothermal is getting ready for test and turn up.
Well, they're hooked up to Finance Department. I mean, they're hooked up to Finance Office.
So they called it out, and everything is okay?
Yep.
All right.
Wow.
That's great. The auditorium refurbishing is nearly completed. New flooring, paint, seating, stage curtains, and a new sound system. The kitchen work, including a new dishwasher, should be completed this week as well. We have completed 41 CMP projects this summer from the Comprehensive Maintenance Plan that involved 10 schools. The projects included, but were not limited to, far lane painting, interior and exterior painting, new carpet in some areas, new VCT flooring in some areas, stage curtain cleaning, and in some cases replacements, playground projects, and some other interior and exterior projects such as curb damage repairs. We demoed two old trailers and holed them out of there, some fencing work and things of that nature. CM Bradley, the playground, is nearing completion. The water tank replacement for Coleman and Marshall Middle School. We're almost there, folks. There will be a special exception pre-application meeting on August 28th, and we hope to send out an invitation to bid by the end of the month. The same thing goes for Southeastern Alternative School. Energy and Water Management, we consumed 9% less energy year-over-year for wrapping up 2012, but our costs increased by 1%, and that was largely due to the increase in prices for fuel oil, oil, propane, and electricity. But we're doing okay there.
Yep. Okay. Thank you.
Sure. StarTalk, we already talked about that. The tour of Falkir High School was absolutely wonderful. It was...
Impressive, isn't it?
It is very impressive, and when that gets done, it's really going to be a shining star for Falkir County. I just wanted to add a couple little things to our Finance Committee meeting that Mr. Gorg talked about. We are watching the health insurance, just keeping an eye on that, so that could develop into something else, but right now, we're just keeping an eye on it. The other thing is the policies, the business operation policies that you have tonight. We left it as is in a couple places so that the entire board could look at it, so make sure you review those really carefully to see what your recommendations will be on that, because we left them as is. And then the other things were just, so that's really it. That's all we're, just want to make sure you know the policies, read those in detail.
Okay.
Okay. Just that Wednesday is a busy day for the board and the school division. We have our Health and Benefits Fair starting at 7:30 in the morning at Liberty High School, followed immediately at 9:30 by convocation. And then at 10:45, the convocation will end, and selected staff members have been invited to our Second Annual 30-Year Luncheon honoring those people in the division with 30-plus years in education. That'll be at Grace Miller. And then everyone gets a few hours' rest, and 5:30 is the new teacher dinner and reception at the Springs Club. The Committee for Excellence in Education sponsors that annually, and that will be on the same, usually it's on Monday night, but we have this meeting this evening, and so it's pushed, so Wednesday will be chock-full of excitement for everyone.
Okay. We did not have Personnel Committee meeting, but a couple of things I need to remind everybody. We announced it, or we decided, I should say, at our work session, but I will announce it again. The 2013-2014 calendar that we were looking at, we have decided to push that back a while, any discussion of that until we unfortunately have to hire a new superintendent, so we thought it would only be fitting that we give him an opportunity to give us his thoughts on changing that calendar, so we're just going to put that on hold for a while. And the other thing, again, to do with the superintendent search, board members will be out in force at schools for the next month. We're going to, I think we have most of the back-to-school nights covered. There will be a board member at each of the schools for those back-to-school nights, simply to take input from parents as far as what they would like to see as we begin the superintendent search. I know some of the schools don't necessarily have a time when all the parents are together to announce that, but hopefully word will get out, and we'll just be there. And there's a couple of schools now that we have conflicts with Wednesday night is one, Taylor, and then...
Work session.
The work session, so we may have to figure out something else for them. But other than that, tell parents to find us in the building if they want to give us some of their thoughts, okay? And Ms. Kotoff, Financial Management.
Good evening. What you have before you is your first look at how the year ended. This is as of August 8th. Now, we continue to pay accounts payable through this week and continue to receive revenue, which is a good thing, because if you look at it, the year-to-date revenue is less expenditures by $483,000. One of the big-ticket items that still comes in is the June sales tax that was collected. We don't get to August. So even before I left the office today, I was seeing if it was there yet to see how close it is to my estimate, but it's not in yet. So that, in that, we're anticipating about $1 million, so that will certainly shift it. At the end of the year, when everything settles out, we're looking at slightly less than 1% of our budget left.
That's kind of...
Yeah, it is, it's close. Also, the School Asset Fund, the Board of Supervisors, when they adopted the budget, that has an automatic carryover for those projects. The School Textbook Fund, that we will take action to you, to take to the Board of Supervisors, requesting that to be carried over, as we do every year. And the Food Nutrition Fund, at this point, again, there's still some things settling down. We'll end in a positive and add to its fund balance.
Good.
All right. Any questions?
Ms. Darnar and I both read an article in the Fredericksburg paper not too long ago about the huge debt that the School Nutrition Fund was carrying from parents, and we've really worked on that.
We have. We still do have some, but it is something we do work on, yes. I can get that information at the next meeting, just as a point of reference.
Janice did send it to me, and I think it's like, it's very low.
In fact, I have the article to talk about in senior staff tomorrow, but it used to be, a number of years ago, it was about $33,000. Right now, it's about $6,900.
Oh, wonderful.
They've done a really good job, managers have worked with the principals and worked with the parents in collecting the money, and the total's about $6,900.
And so everybody understands what that is, is when a child comes to school and doesn't have money, of course, we feed them, but the parents do owe that. Or if they pay at the end of the year, don't they, some of them have a balance?
Sometimes, to graduate, we let them know that they've got a balance remaining. Some do leave the school division without paying, so part of that may be some that have left the school division.
Yeah. But the article was close to $100,000 for the other, we didn't want to mention other school divisions, so.
Yes. Yep, okay. Thank you. Ms. Downs, Human Resource Department.
Good evening. We're in that last-minute push to try to fill some positions. For certified vacancies, we still currently have 13. We have some offers pending. We've had some significant challenges in recruiting speech and language pathologists, occupational therapists, as well as, I think that's it for the certified challenges. Classified, though, we have a number of positions. We are at 35, and we have seen, had significant challenges recruiting bus drivers. I've had three, my team has had three bus driver fairs where it advances the hiring process, meaning people can come in off the street, apply, go through the orientation, and be ready to start subbing. We have not had huge turnouts at each. I would say overall, we've probably had about 35, that's for all three. So we are, I've talked to the town manager and have partnered with him to get those electronic signs that come into Warrenton, which will say, "Bus drivers need it with our phone number," and they will go live, hopefully, this week, trying to do some different things to attract some strong applicants. Also having trouble recruiting school health nurses, as well as...
Sure we are.
Yeah, as custodians, believe it or not. Custodians, right now, we're having trouble recruiting that pool. So some significant challenges, definitely have three recruiters out there trying to make cold calls when people have maybe applied before, trying to get with retirees, because sometimes they would like to come back for a second job. So that's currently what we're doing in HR. Dr. Lewis spoke about Wednesday, our busy day there, our Health and Wellness Fair, as well as the 30-plus dinner, and then I think that's about it.
How many do we have, 30-plus?
About 102, yes. Yeah. So very, 102, yes. I meant to grab how many RSVPs came, but I did not grab that number this evening.
Now, that's fewer than last year, but we had a lot of retirees.
It is fewer than last year, yes. But I'm sure we also had someone bridge over.
That's true. But that's still, given the size of the division, to have over 100 people with 30-plus years is...
Right.
So Wednesday night's number is still fluid right now, right?
Wednesday's nights, no. We're having, most people are saying yes to Wednesday night, so I've been able to give Megs...
But I'm saying, if they pick up any more...
Oh, yes, oh, yes, definitely.
But what do we have now, at this point, do you know? New...
No, I should know that. I don't...
About 40, 44, 45 new teachers. The number's lower than in years past.
Yes, a good bit lower. Okay. Thank you, I guess. Questions, anybody? No.
When are you presenting?
After the consent.
Okay. Okay, is there a motion regarding consent agenda?
Madam Chair, I motion that the school board approve the following: the minutes of the July 9th School Board meeting and the July 23rd Special School Board meeting and work session, payment of bills, personnel actions, support services policy restructuring and revisions, and religious exemption 081312.1.
A second then?
Motion and a second, excuse me, that the school board approve the following: the minutes of the July 9th School Board meeting and the July 23rd Special School Board meeting and work session, payment of bills, personnel actions, support services policy restructuring and revisions, and religious exemption 081312.1. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, and the motion carries.
Yes. I'd just like to take a moment. In passing the consent agenda, which included personnel actions, the board this evening appointed three new assistant principals, and so I'd like to take a moment to introduce them to you now. Seated in the far row next to Ms. Wolf, Dr. Wolf from Pierce, is Karen Spar, and she'll be the new assistant principal at Pierce Elementary School.
Welcome.
Stand up and say welcome. And on the other side, in the back, is Lori Ellison, and she'll be the new assistant principal at Southeastern.
Oh, good.
And Angie Gumm, who's hiding there. Next to Ms. Banks will be the new assistant principal at Bradley Elementary School. We're delighted that they could be here.
Yes, welcome, everybody. Okay, information items, and that's Ms. Kotoff again.
What you have before you is the restructured, revised Section 3, which is Term Business Operations. For each sheet, there are information about changes, so you can see if it's pretty much the same as before or not. These have been through our attorney, and I wanted to just mention a few of them. All the policies went to the attorney, but there's one policy that has an adjustment. It's been to the attorney both ways, so it really is a school board decision. And that falls in Section 2, Planning, and that's about the annual budget. And what the proposal that's included before you is to set a limit to the superintendent's approval for transfers. Right now, the superintendent has, whether we're categorical or not, he has the approval to make transfers within the whole fund, or within category, if it's adopted that way. With this policy, it would limit it to the same amount that you see, $100,000, when you have to approve a contract. And then from that point to the full fund or the full categorical piece, it would be the Finance Committee, and then anything that goes to the Board of Supervisors would have to have the approval of the full board. So it just sets another layer. There's pros and cons about both. At the Finance Committee, we did discuss this, and our decision was to kind of take it forward and see where the full board would like to be on this decision. So, but like I said, the attorneys have seen it both ways, they're comfortable with it both ways. It really is your decision. The only policy that's not included is the procurement policy. It is a large undertaking. I've set up appointment with Finance and the procurement manager to sit through and to go through that. We're looking at streamlining it. We're looking about some of the thresholds and controls, so that will come back probably in October. The only other thing in these policy that's included is the fees and fines, which you have already approved in July. It is included, again, just to kind of have the whole piece there, but what you hadn't seen before are the regulations that are approved by administration, so just for your information, those are included as well. So this, I would take to work session. For any questions, please let me know. We'll look at that and then potentially for approval in September.
Good.
Finance Committee, you folks, you discussed it already.
We discussed it, but...
Anything you have heartburn with?
No, no, except for the policy that Ms. Kotoff was talking about, the one about the limits...
The category of transfer changes.
Right, the category limits of transfers. We thought that should come to the...
Yeah, we just talked about the timing of that policy as well, before a new superintendent comes in, and what that looks like. And we also talked about the absence of restructuring on purchasing...
Yes.
...at this time. I had a concern about that, so.
But everything else, everything else was fine, except that one...
Yeah, that one.
That decision.
Okay.
We'll talk about it at work session.
Yeah, work session, we'll get in more detail.
Yep, okay. Thank you.
But what I'd like to mention again is that it is really helpful, it worked great last time, the way everybody emailed their questions well ahead of time, so that, and the way Ms. Darner did an absolute superb job of putting it all together for the meeting, that was great. So if we could do that again, that'd be great.
Okay.
So, like, write yourself a note. Send those emails with questions.
Probably the Wednesday before. Is that good? To get them out Wednesday before, is that good? That's fine. The Wednesday before the work session?
Okay. Okay, move to action items, and that is the superintendent's, or, excuse me, search consultant. I will just say that hopefully everybody has seen all of the information that Ms. Darner has put together. It's been very informative. I talked with Jay Van Gelder yesterday and got his input from a previous one...
For the benefit of you all who don't know, Jay, he was a former board member who sat on the school board when we did our last school superintendent's search.
Yep, and we've had references from many different sources, many different counties, board members, clerks, so leaving that...
And I would like to add, I went through this process before, and we looked at consultants and the pricing and the strategy and all of these things, and Ben Howerton really, really stood out. I liked the idea that, one, his cost is about half of what some of these others charge, and the fact that he gives us the ability to do some of the legwork so we don't have to be charged. And Ginger does a great job of policing that and keeping us focused on what we need to do and when we need to do it and all of that, and it's worked great in the past. I think we have a good rapport with Mr. Howerton. He certainly understands the demographics of the county and what we look for. He has delivered to us two great superintendents in the past. He's got a great track record.
Right, right.
And that's, he's very impressive.
Yep, and Jay said the same thing. He was, he couldn't say enough good things about the process.
Mrs. Murray mentions the same thing extensively.
Good.
Okay. So, Ryan?
Yeah, I did independent outside, even, you know, what we did as well, and outside the county, one of the candidates was VSBA, and a lot of what we, feedback we had from the reports was confirmed by other folks. And I also looked at the, to get some clarification on state code in terms of what contracts can be done with a superintendent, what type of contracts can be, because I think there is state code specifically about... is state code specifically about that. And I was wondering if Ms. Darnar, if, if you could try to find the state code that's current to, because I don't know, based on LIS and other things, what I, what I have and from DOE, but if we can get that in terms of from the state, what our, what our limitations are and what our requirements are, even before we engage...
Absolutely.
...whatever consultant we select.
Okay. All right. Do, does somebody want to make a motion tonight, or do you need to talk? I talked with Maureen this afternoon. She is very comfortable with Mr. Howerton. After looking at all the information, she also said that, you know, she would be in agreement there.
Well, I certainly would, would feel comfortable in making that motion.
Okay.
If I may. Madam Chair, a motion that the school board employ Ben Howerton to assist and consult with the superintendent's search.
Second. Motion and a second that the school board employ Ben Howerton, and that is with Synergy Professional Resource Group, to assist and consult with the superintendent's search. Any other discussion?
I'd like to echo what Brian was saying as far as getting the state codes, and I think, you know, we've, we've got access to that, and we probably should have some type of, well, in order to discuss salaries and such, I think we have to have a closed session for that, do we not? And I think that's something that, once we get the state codes and we can look at salary structures and, and all of that, before, like you said, before we even engage any, any discussion with, with the shortlist folks.
Yeah, I also want to kind of echo a point here, because I, I took a look at, do you need this? You know, I went to the base question, do you need a consultant?
A consultant, huh?
And I had some people ask me that, and I came to the conclusion, this is a, this is a decision, like, is it Spotsylvania County? You can't get this wrong.
Right.
Because this not only sets your school division back, but to get this wrong is very expensive. And so I just want to also reiterate that for people who are questioning, including myself, do we need to do this? I just, the trajectory this sets us on is, is, you can't do without it at this level, so.
Okay. Okay. If there's no other discussion, there is a motion before us that the school board employ, as I said, Ben Howerton with Synergy Professional Resource Group, to assist and consult with the superintendent's search. All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, and the motion carries, and I will get in touch with him. He said. Okay. Anything else to come before the board in open session? If not, then?
I move that the school board convenes a closed meeting for the purpose of discussing and considering discipline matters pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A parentheses 2.
A second then?
Motion and a second that the school board convene a closed meeting for the purpose of discussing and considering discipline matters pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A parentheses 2. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, and the motion carries, and we are in closed session.